All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, March 2nd, 2015. Mrs. Kennedy, could you call the roll, please?
President.
Mr. Cole. Ms. Sweeney.
Present.
Mr. Lukin.
Here.
Present.
Um, Mr. Chris McCarthy.
Here.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Could we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, before we continue, we do have an addition to our agenda this evening that inadvertently got left off, and that is the topic of the public forum on tolerance and diversity. So, I, we're gonna get through a couple of things first, and then we'll, we'll move on to that. Um, this is a time of public comment now. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the school committee, could you please step forward, state your name and your address, and try to keep, keep your comments to about two minutes? Is there any public comment at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda, do we have warrants?
We have warrants. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $6,446.04 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have another warrant. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $182,477.13 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are also no conflicts here.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Is that it for warrants?
That is it for warrants.
Could you please, um, members, turn your attention to the Newburyport School Committee Business Meeting minutes of Tuesday, February 24th. Would I hear a motion?
I move the approval of the minutes of the business meeting of, uh, Tuesday?
Tuesday, February 24th.
Tuesday, February 24th, 2015.
Second, please. No second on the minutes?
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any comments, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Present.
Minutes carry. Our school committee rep isn't here tonight. Um, we must have killed her with MCAS or, MCAS or homework, I don't know which, which. So, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, um, actually, which is the Sunday use of facilities request, the Spring Fever 5K. Do we have a representative? Yes.
So, we are requesting to use the present in school on Sunday, uh, my name is Scott Dale, uh, Sunday, May 3rd from, uh, quite like the present in around 8:00 AM, and the race would start about 1:00 PM. So, this is the 11th annual race. We've had in the past, we've been able to raise about $20,000 for, uh, the PTO, um, each year. Um, we usually have about 400 5K participants and about 200 fun run participants. Um, this year it's a little bit different because the, uh, there's some construction going on. So, the fun run won't be able to be run on a nice soft lawn. So, we're probably gonna shorten it and have the kids run through the, uh, the finish line. They may give out 50 yard dash and something. That's kind of what we're thinking. Um, so similar to last year, we'll have refreshments in the parking lot. Um, we'll have a DJ and prizes for the winners. It should all be wrapped up about, um, 3:00 PM. And as in the past, we'll have checks from the vote by the, uh, little place.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. DeCantor.
Yes, you say, uh, refreshments in the parking lot, you're talking about the new parking lot, uh, about?
Yeah, so it's gonna be different. The past was on the side near the cafeteria. So, this is gonna be the first year of the new school. So, we're imagining it might be either be in the, where the school buses kinda come in, that area, or via lower park, uh, parking lot where the kids are dropped off.
Maybe on the other side by the playground.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, just given the, this.
Keep away from the cars. I, I don't know.
Thank you for the.
Well, maybe once all the snow goes away, you could take a, a walk around the school and sort of figure out what, where the best site for, for that would be. Cause, um, you know, it could be busy with the cars coming in and out of there. You wanna stay away from the construction, uh, for the senior community center, and so it might make sense to do the refreshments on the backside where the playgrounds are.
Okay.
Any further questions? All those in, in favor, uh, could someone make a motion? Motion to approve the Spring K and Fun Run. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. This is moving nice and quickly. Next, uh, we have a, a, a couple of guests in our audience. Um, and as I mentioned to you before, uh, we do have an addition to our agenda. So, I'd like, uh, Bruce, do you want to introduce some?
Sure. Um, I'd like to introduce Donna Scott from the Commission on Tolerance and Diversity. Um, I've asked Donna to come to talk to us briefly about the community forum that's being planned. We have a date, and I will be able to tell you where this, where it's gonna be held, uh, as well. Um, and Donna is here to tell us a little bit about it, and then to ask for support.
I'm filling in for, um, the chairperson of the Commission on Tolerance and Tolerance, who is Abby Proco, and he was unable to be here today. So, I said that I would be happy to come and to tell you that we, the commission has decided to hold, uh, what we're calling a community forum. The title that we're calling it is Newburyport Says No to Prejudice, a Community Forum. Uh, and it's going to be on Tuesday evening on April 7th at 7:00 PM.
At the NOK Library. It's gonna go from 7:00 to 8:30, although I, knowing how these community forums tend to be, uh, we've reserved the room for longer than that.
Perfect. I just didn't know the venue, cause I didn't know either. Um, I wanted you to know that the goal of the forum is to raise awareness that there is prejudice in our community. And it is a community forum. And what we're hoping to do is, as I said, raise awareness, but in addition to that, we wanna convey the message that we're not powerless. That there are things that we can do as a community to address any prejudices that we may find within our community. And as in personal relationships, if you recognize that something's wrong, and you talk about it, you become healthier and stronger. And it's the goal of the commission to make sure that Newburyport continues to grow in this venue and become healthier and stronger as a community. A little bit about the format of what the, it's, it's totally not nailed down what the format is gonna be at this point, but we do know that we have a moderator whose name is, um, we also, we're saying sort of slash MC in some ways. Um, his name is Padraig, I hope I'm saying that right, O'Hair, who is, um, I think a Newburyport resident, but is also the prof, uh, professor of Religious and Theological Studies at Merrimack College, and is a past director of this, at, at Merrimack College, of the Center for the Study of Jewish, Christian, and Muslim Relations. Ali Jones helped us network to him, and he just looks very fabulous. Um, we recognize that one forum in itself is not gonna solve all problems and issues, but we're hoping that will be a catalyst to people in the community, like clergy, um, parents, schools, and any other group that could be, um, could address these problems within their group and their community. And to let them know that they can continue the conversations outside of the forum, um, and we hope that we can be a catalyst, that forum will be a catalyst to do that. The way the forum is looking right now is, it's gonna be two panels, um, and we're gonna try to mix up the, um, the people who are on the panels in terms of students, adults, um, on, on each of the panels. Um, one of them will be people who have incurred some sort of hate or prejudice, um, personally, and the other, that's one panel. And the other panel will be people who stand up to those prejudices and within the community, and whenever they hear them, they stand up. So, we're gonna have those two kinds of panels, and we sort of see them interacting, but, um, we're not totally sure about that. We're, we, we have a meeting on Thursday, and that should finalize pretty much what the forum is gonna look like. Um, and additionally, there will be some breakout sessions, um, for people in attendance. So, our goal is to reach lots of areas of the community to get them to engage in this forum. Um, and, well.
Sure, yeah. What I would add is that, um, at least at the meeting last week, um, the, uh, the commission was going to ask for, uh, support, active support, affirmative support, from, uh, the Disability Commission, from the Youth Commission. They'd like to ask us as well to endorse this event, uh, and, and provide support and help publicize it.
Any questions?
What is that, the nature of that support? Does he see it?
Well, I, I personally see it as twofold. I see it as, 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 as making a statement that we endorse these kinds of activities in the community, these forums, these, these talking about issues. Um, and I also see using the resources that we've got to help make sure that the community is aware that this is out there, helping publicize. Um, so, so I, that's what I see, the two key elements of the support being.
And coming.
Yeah, I don't think it, it, I don't suspect it incurs a financial, though. But it's, it's a good question. But, but I think that helping publicize it and, and standing up and saying that we, you know, we, we believe that these forums are worthwhile in the community, I think is, is behavior we should be modeling personally.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much, Mr. DeCantor.
Are we, are you?
I would, I would actually like to make a motion that we.
That's what I was gonna ask. Could you make a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, endorse the, uh, the forum being convened by the Commission on Tolerance and Diversity, uh, to look at the issue of prejudice.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your.
Can we make a, a, a second motion just for, for clarity's sake, that we, uh, instruct the superintendent in her office to publicize this event by any means appropriate, the website, uh, the mail blast, whatever, whatever you have available to you, to ensure the broadest participation possible.
There's a high school student who attended the meeting who's also helping with publicity, so we'll make sure that, that, that a student gets connected with superintendent's office as well. So, yeah, is that a motion, Nick?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Let me just, I'd like to ask, the, the city can post on our, our website too, so I think it's important that any, you know, marketing materials for this be sure to come to the city's side too, so we can, you know, reach as many people as possible. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next up on our agenda, I'm gonna turn this part over to Mayor Holliday. We have some guests from Whittier Voc Tech. We have the superintendent, Bill Dorosha, Dorasa?
Dorosha. At least for a few more months.
Yeah.
So, would, could you bring your team up, and could we get some additional chairs for them on the end?
I'm accompanied tonight by Brett Murphy, who is one of our two representatives from Newburyport. Um, Kara Cosmos is our business manager, and Maureen Lynch, who's there in the background, um, she's the principal. Maureen is the principal. And thank you for the invite and the opportunity to be here tonight. Um, I can start to talk a little bit about Whittier and the accomplishments, and then be glad to answer whatever questions people have. Um, I'll just briefly mention, since I've been superintendent, this is my seventh year. I'm ending my seventh year. Uh, we've done a couple of capital projects. We've replaced a roof. My first year as superintendent, the roof was in really bad shape. Um, and MSBA helped us out with that, which was a great thing, which was a great help, as long as, as well as the support of the communities. Um, the second project that we did in terms of a capital project is upgrading the wastewater treatment plant. Life, I always say life is timing. In the middle of the trucks arriving with all the materials for the roof, these people came in green t-shirts with clipboards, and I kept thinking like, who were they, and why are they here when they're delivering materials? And that was, uh, DEP, and deciding that our wastewater treatment plant needed to be upgraded. So, all this kinda came concurrently. So, that project just completed last year. It was a three-year project. Um, we sent communities a capital assessment last year of $200,000 to be able to finish that project, because we didn't have enough money on our own to do that, and thankfully, all the communities, uh, supported that capital assessment which finished the project. Um, in terms of overall accomplishments of the tech school, for our eighth year in a row, we have had a hundred percent pass rate on the MCAS exam, meaning that students have passed ELA, math, and science. Additionally, we have a 96% positive placement rate, which was around 92% the past three or four years. It rose to 96%. To talk about a positive placement rate, a student that graduates either goes to a two, four-year, or other technical school, and we had about 69% of our students do that. They would have to have employment in the field in which they studied, or go into the military in the field, in an area related to a field that they studied. So, with all those things in consideration, we had a 96% positive placement rate last year. Our graduation rate is 98.5% of the four-year cohort, meaning that of the students that start and, and end at the end of four years, um, because as I'm sure you're aware, it doesn't take into account if a student stays back, or things like that, um, we had a 98%, better than a 98% rate. Um, we also have a .02% dropout rate, which is far below the state average, which is about 3.2%. So, we feel that we've had a lot of success with the students that have come to Whittier and, and had the opportunity to receive a vocational technical education in addition to a traditional high school diploma. Um, we, we also have expanded a couple of programs. Recently, we added hospitality to culinary arts. We added hospitality and hotel management, because we feel that that's an area that's growing, and that there's, there is a need. We've identified a need in the Merrimack Valley. Couple of years ago, in our graphic communications, we added design and visual communication. Design and visual communication, um, was an enhancement of what we were already doing, but a separate licensure. So, students are able to pick up two different licenses from us than they were able to do before. We also have a great co-op program. Even in very, very difficult times, our co-op placement rate is pretty high currently. We have about 300 seniors. Of the 300 seniors, 150 are out on co-op placements. So, we're really proud of that, especially given the, given the, uh, the economy, the way that it's been these past few years. Um, it's, it's been an excellent opportunity for these students to learn more. And, and many of these co-op placements become permanent jobs for them, become permanent placement for their career, and things like that. And those are also lots of the people who serve on our advisory board. We have two advisory board meetings a year. Those are also the people who serve on our advisory board, and, um, give us the support we need in terms of Chapter 74 programs. In terms of Newburyport, your enrollment has pretty much stayed consistent in the high teens to low twenties. For the upcoming school year, the 15, 16, upcoming school year, you have 14 applications on file. Um, you're graduating two seniors, this, we're graduating two of your seniors this year. Um, so enrollment will probably be up next year if all those students elect to come. Your, your enrollment will probably be up a little bit next year, um, in terms of students, cause as I said, you, you have two seniors graduating. And that's kind of an overview of, of what's been going on at Whittier. And I would be glad to, myself or anybody else, to answer any questions that, that anybody else has.
Questions? Well, I would just like to thank you for your seven years of service, and before that, as business manager, I think you've been a tremendous superintendent. I was sorry to see that you're retiring at the end of this year. I, I really do think you've brought Whittier to the next level, and, uh, I certainly have appreciated working with you and the work that you've done, uh, to provide a quality technical education for, uh, not only Newburyport students, but those in the Merrimack Valley. So, I, I appreciate that. Um. Mr. DeCantor?
I think one of the things, just sort of, you talked about here, our, um, colleague, Dan Keown, who's here, he probably talked about this, is, um, the fact that we truly believe that Whittier is one of the uncovered gems in terms of opportunities for education, uh, for Newburyport students. Um, what can we, or should we do more to publicize Whittier? Obviously, among certain middle school students.
I, I think that, um, Newburyport has always been helpful in terms of allowing all of the eighth graders to tour. People have traditionally done that. Um, and we work closely with the middle schools. I know our guidance department chair works closely with the middle schools to make students more aware. We have an open house every year in November, first Sunday in November, and we invite all eighth graders, and we're thinking of adding seventh graders to that as well, inviting all seventh and eighth grade, uh, graders, so that they become a little bit more aware a little bit sooner. And we do a lot in terms of press releases. Our website, um, is very consumer friendly, constantly updated with Whittier happenings and events as well. So that, and, and as we all know, younger people are much more, have much more savvy with technology than we do.
Mr. McCarthy?
So, how many students do you have total?
About 1356.
And how many of those, or percentage, are outside of the districts that are in the Whittier catchment area?
I can tell you that a hundred, I couldn't give you the percentage, uh, but I can tell you that about 130 are from outside the district.
So, they're choiced in?
Yes.
And, one other question. So, um, you, you have 14 applications. So, in the past, um, just an idea as to how many of our kids apply, and how many get in, or if, how many don't get in. Like, I'm just curious, you know, it's been out there that.
Sure.
Kids apply, they don't get in, and then there's some of these seats, uh, choice, for choice kids, and there's a little, you know, there's some rumors out there. So, I just was curious.
Your acceptance, I want to say your, Newburyport, Newburyport's acceptance rate is probably about eight, between 70 to 80% of your students meet the admission requirement first time out.
And what's the number one, I, I know back a few years ago, before your time, um, the big stumbling block for our kids was the interview. I'm not sure why the interview, but they weren't getting in, because they were unable to pass the interview. What do you see it now as, um, possibly some of the reasons that, that the other 20, 20 to 30% aren't getting in?
What we do is we look, when we finish our admissions cycle, we take a look at the students who didn't meet the criteria the first time out, and we kinda do a flow chart, like compare it to our five criteria. And it's, there isn't one area that's more balanced than another. In other words, I couldn't tell you that, uh, of the five areas, attendance is the one, or grades are the one. It's, it seems pretty well, uh, spread.
Okay.
Uh, across all five areas that students, um, years ago was attendance, but I think since we've all kinda tightened up on attendance requirements, um, you, you don't see that anymore. I would, I would say that in my years, I've been there 24 years, um, attendance was probably one of the biggest stumbling blocks, but that really has changed.
And I know, I had a, a meeting at the middle school not too long ago, and, um, I had inquired about whether we had, um, someone that was kind of working with Whittier and, and our kids to prepare them. Um, do, do you see that as a strong relationship? Do you think it could be stronger, is it stronger in other communities? I see it kind of like a liaison. I think actually I might've used that word, but, um, could we be doing more? I know what you just said about the open house, but could we be doing more with, um, some sort of a liaison to our middle school, or do you think it's adequate, or?
We would always be willing, um, and our guidance person, we could talk to the guidance people in Newburyport. We always would be willing to come, uh, to your middle school as well, to do presentations for your sixth and seventh graders. We're always willing to do things like that. And we also have a project discovery, which is run over the summer. Um, it's a minimal expense, and project discovery, we usually have five or six tech areas that are open over the summer, and students get a chance to come and explore those over the summer for four hours a day, Monday through Thursday.
Middle schoolers?
Yes, fifth, uh, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks.
How many of each of them?
Uh, four.
And could you refresh my memory? What is our current contribution to Whittier this year, for instance?
The total contribution is 336, 873.
336, 873. Is the total contribution from Newburyport to Whittier Tech.
And how many students do we currently have in all these grade levels from Newburyport?
18.
Is that fairly average for the, the, the school districts in your region?
Um, it, it varies. 70% of our population comes from April. Um, some towns, Groveland, Merrimack, have had sharp increases in, in students attend, very sharp increases. Uh, last year, we doubled in Newberry. We doubled student enrollment in Newberry. But they were such, they are such a small town, I think they went from like six to 12. So, when I say they doubled, it, you know, it obviously had significant impact on them.
And their, did their assessment go up accordingly?
Yes, oh yes. Yes, their assessment doubled.
So, what is your current per pupil cost?
It's an average of about 15,000.
I believe that the latest, uh, present, I think that was on the DES, he was about 17,000.
Seventeen.
The fifth lowest in the state for, per pupil for a vocational high school.
So, currently there are 18 students. Next year, two are gonna.
Graduate.
Graduate. So, that would bring us down to 16, and you have 14 applicants.
Right.
When do you do your interviews?
Um, the interviews are already, I believe they are already done. The acceptances are all done on April 1. Students are notified April 1.
Okay. So, we won't know till then, unless you tell us.
If the, um.
In a public forum.
Don't say a word.
You can write it on a piece of paper and just pass it around the table. Bruce?
I was gonna say, if that 70 or 80% admission rate holds, then we're probably looking at close to 25 or 26 potentially students from Newburyport.
Well, you had 14 apply, so.
If 14 apply, and let's say 10 get in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you drop me two, so it'd be 26, 25, or 26.
Sure, yeah.
That probably would be as, it would be a significant number, I think.
Mm-hmm, yes, it would.
For us.
Just one, just one other question. Um, so aside from attendance, if a student doesn't get in, is there a second chance?
Sure, they can apply, uh, again, uh, midway through grade nine. So, they come from the end of the second quarter, which, you know, is lately with all the snow is a moving target for the end of January, but, um, they could come for the last two quarters. We would customize their freshman exploratory, so that they would see the tech areas they were primarily interested in. Um, there's that opportunity, and there's opportunities at the end of the school year for the following school year.
But no second chance before your freshman year, like, it's a.
Well, would we notify students in April? We tell them what areas they need to improve in. If they improve in those areas by the end of the year, or in summer school, then yes, we would still take them in September.
Do you do a waitlist? So, for example, you have people who are sort of on the cusp?
Yes.
So, and you don't get people who decide they wanna go, and then you sort of back into that next tier?
Right.
Okay.
And we call, we follow through too. Guidance is aggressive, calling and following through students that are close to the, you know, being able to make it to find out what's going on. And also, we've also looked at students who don't come, who are accepted and don't come, and try to follow through and see like, where are, did they just go to their, you know, homeschool, or did they go to, you know, a private or, you know, we look at those things as well.
How many, how many degrees do you currently offer, or licensures?
20.
A degree in licensure, or is there a difference?
They get a vocational technical certificate in 20 areas, in addition to the high school diploma, one of 20 areas, which I want to choose and specialize in.
Okay, one. So, it's, okay.
And then there are lots of other license, like, for example, all of our students who graduate from Health Oc are certified nurses assistants. All of our students who graduate from cosmetology have passed the state, uh, cosmetology exam. All culinary arts kids have to do the SURF Safe program and have SURF Safe. So, within those, in, in office technology, there's Microsoft licensure, I'm forgetting a few others. There are, so each, lots of areas have, you know, small licenses or licenses that match. So, each, lots of areas have, you know, small licenses or licenses that matter to those fields that students graduate with in addition to the, the vocational technical certificate.
And your placement rate, it, you said was ninety-six percent?
Not, uh, positive placement rate is ninety-six, yes.
I, I had the pleasure a couple of years ago of coming to Whittier and there were a group of us on the school committee that went and we had lunch and toured the school and I had no idea. I have to honestly tell you, I didn't have any idea of the offerings at that school. And it's just incredible. It's incredible. I won't even talk about the lunch we had.
Which is also incredible.
But you have to go on Wednesday, right?
Uh, Tuesday.
Tuesday. So, field trip next Tuesday, guys.
I thought you were gonna say you were so impressed with the school committee room and you wished we had lunch.
Well, that too. I was, you know.
And students did the work on that.
It's a little bit different than this room, isn't it? You, you guys look like the Supreme Court.
Hi, Bill. How are you?
How are you doing, Steve?
Good. Uh, just a couple of things related to the nursing program. I think it's fair to say that students come to the nursing program, are gonna have more clinical experience than say a student at the high school who may be applying for, you know, applying to a nursing school but hasn't had the interface with the different healthcare institutions.
Right. We have a, a, a great placement rate with four-year B S R N schools. And what gives us students the advantage, schools like Salem State, we've had students go to B C. What gives the advantage is the clinical experience that they actually have under the belt by the time they graduate from high school.
I know that.
Those kids do some great things.
I found that very impressive. And just from a historical note, and this is for the committee, anyone else, but back in the seventies, actually when Brett and I were going to high school, there's probably a hundred twenty-five kids going to Whittier Tech from Newburyport. And frankly, one of the things that's changed is the demographic of Newburyport has changed. I mean, back then, there was a saying that went around town that if you wanted to own a home in Newburyport, you better learn how to swing a hammer. And I think that translated itself into more young people from the area going to tech schools. And like I say, the demographic has changed now and, and I think it's really important to, for our, our school district as well as others to really demonstrate or parade out what the opportunities are at Whittier because I think there's a, a number of careers that students can engage in that will be quite fruitful, you know, if they find out what the options are. So, I just encourage you to keep it up and, and I look forward to coming over and maybe soon and checking out some of those new areas, programs that you have.
Our next task is to vote for Nelson Burns, who unfortunately couldn't be here today. He is on vacation, but he would like to be reappointed as one of, two of our reps for school committee for Whittier.
To move that we appoint Nelson Burns to the position of representing Newburyport on the Whittier Board.
Second. Could I hear a second, please?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're on a roll tonight.
If, if I may, before I leave, I'd like to thank Newburyport, the community overall and the school committee for their support over the years. Our relationship with the superintendent because we work closely together. And I especially would like to thank the Honorable Mayor Holliday because even when she was on the Newburyport City Council, my first time going to the Newburyport City Council when I was assistant superintendent to ask for money, she was, uh, and I was asking for a lot of money at the time because it was authorization to borrow. And she was a friendly face and a big help and has always been a supporter of Whittier Tech and I certainly appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck to you and your
Thank you.
retirement.
And your search.
Yeah, the, well, the search. And next on our agenda is the Mullen School Improvement Plan. So, could I invite Tara and members of your school council to come up and join us?
Hi.
Hi.
This is Pam Miles and Amy Rodriguez to invite parents on our council.
Jump right into it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the plan was aligned with the Resnahan Plan, which is normally what we do, we continue the vertical alignment. So, some of the items that you'll see will be familiar and some of the probably performance indicators and improvement strategies and activities will be a little bit different. Um, the first section around curriculum assessment is obviously the continuation of implementing our evaluation system and using our new baseline edge data system. So, right now, we are actually in the process of teachers that are non-P T S right before the vacation turned in their evidence and all of my teachers did their evidence online. So, there's a board that we look online and I get on and it's kind of, if you're familiar with Pinterest at all, it looks like that where you can, they can upload evidence and we've had training around it. And so, it's pretty neat that it's working that way. It's an adjustment for people. People have the option of still handing in the binders that they used to have, but I didn't get any binders yet. So, we'll, we'll see if I get some at the end of the year, but, and we're in the process of writing the formatives in the baseline edge system. So, and any observations that have been done so far this year have been in this new system. I mean, so far, it seems to be going pretty smoothly. It's, it's a pretty intuitive system, fairly easy to use. New programs, the Engage New York Math, which has been purchased and is now officially Eureka Math, and our Think SRSD writing approach, which two of my teachers, actually three of my teachers were trained early on in the year and then the rest of my teachers that teach writing were trained in early December and implemented the strategy with their pers, teaching of persuasive writing. Um, and parents might actually see some of that coming home. They will hear their kids talking about pile plus tree, which is an organizer that the students use when they are doing persuasive writing. And I've been in the classrooms and our teachers are doing an incredible job of that and kids are already transferring the, what they're learning around that organizer to their other writing. Um, and I've, I've talked with fourth graders that are using it and fifth graders and the feedback from the kids is that it's helping them. It's helping them organize their thinking around writing. Um, so, we're pretty pleased with it so far. The goal of the program is really to develop independent self-regulated writers. So, we will continue with this and the rest of our staff will get trained in the other two genres, narrative writing and expository writing moving into next year. We didn't want to overwhelm. Our staff has had a lot of new, they've been, you know, obviously the construction, everything that's been going on. They've been handling everything really well. So, we don't want to overwhelm, overwhelm too much, not too many new things at once.
Tara, would you remind me what that stands for?
Oh, the S I, yes. Self-regulated strategy development.
Thank you.
We will be, some of the teachers have already started looking at and working on the next generation science standards that have been released. That will probably be a big focus area moving into next year. It'll be for all of us. We'll all be focusing on it in all schools. We'll be doing vertical work and looking at materials that we may need, materials that we may already have within the district and what needs to move and shift. Our STEM class is fantastic. Kristin Dagel is our STEM teacher. She has just run with this program. The only downside to it, I would say, is that the students only get it once, for the most part, once in an eight-day rotation. And I really would love for them to get it more. So, the beginning of the year, the focus was completely around making sure all fourth and fifth graders really understood the scientific method and could go through all the steps, write lab reports and understood quantitative versus qualitative data. Next year, the fourth graders incoming, third graders, our new fourth graders will learn the scientific method and the fifth graders are going to focus on the engineering design method. They've done a number of experiments and what they've shifted to right now is a real-life project focusing on erosion at Plum Island. And that's really, to me, that's really what I want the kids to be doing is that project-based, real-life learning connected to STEM. And so, this is in, right in their community. Kristin met with an engineer and got information, so it's, it's pretty exciting for our students. And again, the feedback from the kids is they love, love STEM class. Any questions about?
Yeah, I, I actually do.
Mr. Mine?
Yeah, um, two questions. One is, will the kids actually go out to Plum Island as part of this experience?
That's a good question. I don't know. I don't know if she is debating planning a field trip out there. The fourth grade students have did some field trips at the beginning of the year where they were, when the weather was nicer and they were able to, you know, look at the different types of animals and things like that on the island. So, a lot of them have been out there on field trips, but I would have to ask Kristin.
Um, and the second question I have is you talked about how much the kids love STEM and how you wish they could get it more. What would it take to deliver more of those STEM classes to kids?
Um, it would, well, it would, she would, her position would need to increase a little and I, we would need to look at our scheduling and pos, and adjust our schedule, which is a huge goal of ours anyways that I'm in the process of. Eight days is, just seems crazy for fourth and fifth graders. So, actually Lisa Furlong, the assistant principal of the middle school, has a nice mind for scheduling. So, we've been meeting, possibly trying to do a four-day schedule that's somewhat similar to the middle school so that maybe students would have a whole trimester of STEM so they could really dig in, focus on a project and then rotate to maybe a different explorer. So, we're gonna try, I think, something like that.
Thank you.
Any other STEM questions?
Families and community. Everybody knows we have new websites. We are, and I, I sent this out to the community. It is definitely a work in progress, still working on, I'm still working on understanding how to update our website. Gonna get some extra training on it and, because I really want to have consistent postings out there and things to be very current. So, we are, we are working on that. One of the goals for next year is having a parent-student handbook posted online. Um, as it is, I do send home weekly updates, at least weekly, to the parents and out to the community on what's going on at the school, upcoming events, just information that they need to know. We've talked as a leadership team about making sure our teachers all have websites. For the, I would say for the most part, Mullen teachers all have websites and update them fairly consistently, but that is going to be a goal district-wide for all of us next year to make sure that all of our teachers are posting consistently to their sites. Some more, you know, we are, we are, we are definitely interested and we've tossed it around about having some maybe other opportunities after school for students at Mullen. So, whether it's some types of after-school clubs or homework help, we'd like to have something more for our kids that they could stay now that the construction is done and we have app, free access to our building, to the places in our building. So, that's something that we are definitely interested in. I've had, I had a parent reach out to me asking about, you know, developing an after-school program for students that are interested in STEM and computer programming. So, that would be something that we would love to do. So, that would be something we're looking forward to try and get started at Mullen. We already have, our teachers already offer an hour after school to students weekly for academic support. Um, so, we'd like to expand that. I would love to, we had a math night at Mullen that went very well. And I had teacher volunteers that were teaching the parents the new methods that we're using with the students in the math program. It was very successful. We got some great feedback. We want to be able to continue to offer those types of nights for parents to learn more about the curriculum and get a better understanding of it. And I think one of the goals that I've talked a little bit about and talked a little bit about with our building leadership team is I want to see some more writing celebrations at the school, which would, whether it's a grade level at a time or half a grade level, but parents invited in to, to, you know, to just sit and listen to some of the students' writing. Writing is a huge area for our kids and we are working, you know, pretty hard on improving it. So, to be able to share some of the writing that the kids are doing and parents coming in and being able to listen to that, I think would be fantastic. The professional culture piece. I love this first one, increasing opportunities for students to develop civic understanding and appreciation of community contributions and op, and I should probably add to that as I was kind of making notes today. Their responsibility also as being a member of a community, so they're, they're, for kids, it's their classroom community and then our greater grade level community, our school community, their town, and then really kind of extend that globally. Perfect, just a perfect example of this is right now, I think it was Friday, I had five boys from Lauren Aramos' class come to me. They had an idea. They saw that a lot of cans for a drink sold in the cafeteria were being tossed in the trash and they recognized that you can get five cents per can if you collect these cans. And they decided they wanted to create a campaign called, Don't Ditch the Switch. The name of the juice is switch. And they're collecting all the cans and they're hanging signs and they're going to talk to all of the classrooms and they are super excited about it. They made the presentation to me, they hung up signs and they're collecting the cans and they want to put the money towards extra equipment for recess. And to me, when the idea comes from the kids, that's the best. When it comes from them, that's powerful and empowering for them. And they were leaving on Friday with this big box of yelling to me, fifty cans, Miss Rossi! And just so excited about it. And that's when it's really powerful. And so, they're doing something about giving back to their school. Um, and so, it's those kinds of opportunities that I love when it comes right from them and just recognizing that and continuing to do those types of things. And we've talked as a leadership team and Susan talked about this when she came to Newburyport about developing some district-wide core ethical values and I think we are all on board with that and really want to be able to do that. And, you know, I see having assemblies, monthly assemblies around that and recognizing students that are modeling these values. Um, and there's a lot that can be done with that. And then the last is, which is one of the most important, obviously, teaching all students. We look at our MCAS data every year at the beginning of the year. And then we move to looking at more of the local data that we're using consistently in the classroom. Um, we are interested and I, with the two curriculum coordinators, Liz Kinsey and Emily Rossen, today we listened, we were on a conference call with N W E A and they have online assessments for reading and for math. And we're considering moving to some different types of online assessments that can be given not just at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year, but likely three times a year. It would take away, what we use right now for our students for reading are the reading benchmarks. The reading benchmarks are, they're great, they give good information, but they take a lot of time. A teacher has to sit one-on-one with the student and give the reading benchmark assessment and it's somewhat subjective. These online assessments give a wealth of data. So, we're just looking into them right now and gathering information. It was, you know, great to just talk to somebody about what, what that can offer. So, we're looking into that. The data that some of the online assessments give is, today's, today's conference call was all like aligned with Common Core standards, gave goals for students to work on. It's very thorough. So, again, it's just right now kind of just dipping our toes in the water a little bit with looking into that. But like I said, we, you know, we're always looking to improve performance, but not just on the MCAS. It's a lot of looking at our assessments that are built in. The math has interim assessments that are built in and teachers have those scores and look at, you know, they can they can right away see students that need assistance in certain areas and students that are being, that are, you know, maybe bump up a little bit. So, there, we consistently look at data. Another thing that I think is pretty exciting, we were able through a grant, as well as the, some of the FFNE money from construction, purchased standing desks in our classrooms. And what the standing desks do is they have a bar on the bottom. So, a student that may need to move a lot in the classroom and sitting for a long period of time just doesn't work for them can get up at the standing desk and move, you know, move their feet while they're standing and writing. These have been the biggest hit already. We're already thinking we need more than one in each room. And we did just order a couple of, they are like pedals, bikes that go under a student's desk, so a student could actually pedal to while working. The goal of this is really just having more universal things in the classroom that all kids can have access to. Lots of kids need to get up and move and they can concentrate better when they're moving and get more work done when they're up and moving around. So, these have been fantastic and, you know, I'm going into the rooms and the students are waving about them. Of course, they all want one right now, but that novelty will wear off a little bit. But, so just uni- universal supports where all, all students can access these things and it just becomes the norm. Do you have other questions?
Taryn, can you go backwards just a bit? No, not that you went too quickly. So, you're gathering data and facts. What, what is the instructional change that occurs as a result of that in a classroom? Bring me through like a typical lesson or whatever of differentiation or what do you do?
Sure. And one per, I, I think one really good example is with, within this new math program, there are exit tickets. An exit ticket is just a quick question at the end of a lesson that will just maybe give a math problem. And so, the teacher can give out the exit ticket. All the kids take it on their own. They turn it in. And that teacher that evening can take a look at the exit tickets and say, wow, I have fifteen students that, they got this, no problem. But I have six kids that made some, you know, a mistake on this exit ticket. And so, what you'll see teachers do is the next day during part of the math lesson, pull those six kids in a group while the other students are working on a problem set. And they'll pull those kids and do a reteaching or modeling what was, you know, where the mistake was or what was missed. And that's, that's, that's like just a day-to-day for every math lesson, there's an exit ticket. With guided reading, teachers pull their students into small guided reading groups. And while they're talking with the students, are asking them questions, comprehension questions, and they can very easily note, okay, this student, you know, is really not understanding, you know, this part of the text. So, they can take an anecdotal note, meet with the student later or, you know, say, okay, let's reread this section and come back to it. So, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of just day-to-day assessment that's very ongoing that our, that good teachers just do naturally. But the exit tickets with the math is amazing. And I have had teachers tell me that that's exactly how they use them.
Right. Thank you for that example. Any other? Mr. Cole?
Thank you. You talked a lot about STEM and you talked a lot about the vertical alignment that you're looking to progress upon that's already kind of started at the Brezner Hand School. One of the things, and I was involved with it about eight years ago at the old Brezner Hand School when they first cranked up the science fair called Science Rocks back then. Do you do any type of science fair at the Newbury Court?
We do.
You do?
Yes, and actually, I'm glad you asked that.
I got some more, so.
Good question. Because we're, we're, we are really shifting it this year because of the work that has happened in our STEM class. And so, Kristin Dagel, our STEM teacher, Liz Kinsley, our STEM coordinator, myself, I've met with the two Karen reps already. And we're in the process of planning it. And the group, the, the expectation, I feel like, for our STEM fair, our STEM exhibition is going to be, we're raising the bar really, because we, we are, we will be asking students that they need to use the scientific method. So, they're really gonna need to lay out that whole process for the fair this year. So, we're excited about that. We have, on March seventeenth, the Museum of Science is coming to do two presentations, one to the fourth grade and one to the fifth grade. And that's kind of our kickoff where the students will watch the Museum of Science presentation and then we'll talk about the science fair and kick it off that way. And we're in the process of developing the packets that will be sent home, but we're, we're raising the bar on that.
All right. Similarly, the new Brezner Hand has some really, really nice art amenities, tremendous art rooms. I have a daughter right now in college who's a dual major between painting and art history. And I sent her a picture of it and she was amazed. How are you building upon that? Because I don't see any mention of art or music in here. You know, people often talk about STEM, but others in the know will talk about STEAM. And I think one quick fact related to STEAM is that if you look at students who go to med school or become doctors, a majority, and I think it's over sixty percent of those students are musi- or have some type of musical skill, because music is a way that causes one to practice, to develop a discipline. And, and I think that it's really important to complement, you know, strong STEM program with things like art and music.
Absolutely. I agree totally, Steve. I'm a huge arts proponent. I was a drama girl myself, so I'm, I'm a big proponent of the arts. The fact that we were able, because of the budget lot, you know, the budget going through next year, and we were able to, you know, come to two full-time art teachers has been a huge improvement in our art program. And actually Johnny, our art teacher, was able to do some integration, which again, for me, is any, any integrating that can happen, the kids learn so much from that. So, she's been able not only to teach the art classes in the rotation, but also to have some time in the classrooms doing some integration with teachers on projects that they're working on. So, for example, the solar system with science. So, that's been fantastic. Also, this year was the first year that Mullen has offered an orchestra. And we had students performing at the Mullen Concert in December, playing violins. And it was amazing. We had, we had a big percentage of students and that's really exciting.
Good, yeah, no.
And then, of course, all my munchkins in the Wizard of Oz.
Great, yeah. I mean, wherever.
Your eye grease, Steve. Yeah, it is a missing piece.
Yeah, and if it's going on, parade it out, because I think one of the things, you know, I, a former mentor used to tell me, you know, Steve, it's not, Newbury Court, I mean, it's not, in this case, it's not Mullen Academy of Math and Science. It's the Mullen School. And, and I think we need to keep that balance, so.
Yes, and I, and I, our music teacher and our art teachers are phenomenal. And actually, our, I'll just toss this date out to everybody, April thirtieth is our fourth grade Mullen State Night. And our music teacher every year is, this is some more integration that she does. And so, the fourth graders do these great state projects. And they also perform, the entire fourth grade performed songs that were integrated with our music teacher, Jamie. So, put that on your calendar.
Thank you. I already wrote it down. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thoughts?
In terms of, sort of thinking about the budget, what are some of the, some, you know, specific things that you think that we should be thinking about or consider, you know, budgetary priorities that will help move this plan along as quickly as possible? So, you mentioned the STEM, you know, STEM, FTE for STEM. I mean, that, that's one very specific thing.
Right, that's one. And I think, you know, whether it's next year or the year after, we're, we're really working on a three-year budget plan so that the school committee can really see our goals, you know, long-term and up and coming. You know, there, you know, right now, we have a point-five social worker, I mean, school adjustment counselor. We really could use a one-out. I mean, it's, it's very clear, you know, the two days that she is not there that we're in need of that additional support.
We, you also need a fifth-grade teacher.
Oh, yeah. I keep forgetting that, yes. And that's really not an option. We have, currently have eight fourth grade moving up to the fifth grade. We only have seven fifth-grade teachers and we have eight incoming classes. So, Mullen next year will be going from fifteen classes to sixteen. We'll have eight and eight. So, we, yes, thank you, Susan. We, we will need an additional fifth-grade teacher for next year for our fourth graders to move up.
And what's your average class size?
We're at around twenty-three. I would say twenty-three is the average. Some classes have twenty-four, some classes have twenty-five. So, we're, our numbers are, our fourth grade, yeah. Our fourth grade class is about a hundred and ninety students. It's a big group of kids and it's a big group coming in, so.
So, you're adjustment counselor. Is that, does that person just by referral or?
Referral meaning?
Uh, re- a child referred to them, like, or, or are they available to everybody?
Available to everybody. Available to everybody. So, it's both. It's maybe a student that, you know, has, you know, some kind of social, you know, conflict with another student that they could just go on any given day, or it could be, you know, a student that has a specific goal that they need to work on. So, sh- it's really available to, to everybody.
So, you have, so you have right now a point-five adjustment counselor, but you do, but you have a school psychologist too, right?
We do have, yes, we do have a school psychologist, yes. Full-time school psychologist, yes, yeah. However, that, a lot of that time is taken up with testing, with evaluating. So, there are chunks of time in the school year where, and right now is one of them. With five snow days in February, our school psychologist is completely tied up with doing the evaluations for students that have been referred for, you know, a three-year eval or.
That's to meet the timelines. So, it's, so what happens is that whenever there's a snow day, now that's.
They're backed up again.
They get backed up.
And I think it's hugely important because there are more and more, you know, I've been working with Kath- Kathy Riquio and I and have had some significant discussions around how we feel we all need some training around our students that have experienced trauma. And I think it's a bigger number than we realize. And, you know, on top of that, then, you know, we have students that just maybe going through a difficult time. We have students that experience anxiety, school refusal. And, and, you know, to have a counselor that's available to work with these students on a given day is, is huge. I think, you know, Mullen is, you know, it's me as the administrator and Diane and then, you know, I need the support of the counselor to be able to like help with students on a day where, you know, I'm too busy or, you know, there's, it's, it's definitely needed. We'll, we'll be next year almost at four hundred students. So, that's a pretty, pretty big jump.
Mike, did I cut you off?
No.
I didn't know if you had finished and then I asked a question and then Audrey did. So, I just wanted to get back to you to make sure I didn't chop you off.
I mean, you mentioned some of the specifics around budgeting. So, certainly be interested hearing more as we go through that process.
And I think in your point, you mentioned science materials?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, I think that's gonna, I mean, that will be as we're moving forward and seeing what we have in the district and, you know, what we then will need. You know, I, I, right now, I wouldn't be able to say, oh, we need A, B, C, and D for our science materials. But once we're all meeting as a district and looking at, looking at the next generation science standards thoroughly, it's likely that we will need to either purchase some items or shift, shift things. Again, I think, you know, we need to kind of do a thorough vetting of what we have, where that will go, and then what we'll need to purchase.
What do you think your biggest need is for next year?
I was just gonna say something about an office that doesn't slide.
Oh, please.
Yes. For the second time, I have to add.
For the second time this year.
The new one? We had, we had a glycol leak in, in both Tara's office and in the, in the outer area.
That's not a lot to ask for, okay?
Um, no, I mean, I, you know, I think probably the biggest things are the adjustment counselor, increasing our language-based program, which has gone really well this year. We have a super, we have a fantastic teacher, Wilson-trained. A number of our Mullen teachers have gotten Wilson-training as well. So, you know, we're strong in that area, but we will have some language-based students coming in, coming up from the Brez. So, I think we may need to increase her position and do, you know, some, again, some of the more deeper kind of digging in work with students that need that time with the language-based teachers, so that's fine. You know, whether it's next year or down the road, you know, the Brez has an interventionist, a math interventionist. I think we would, you know, our students would benefit from that kind of position as well. Whether it's a position that starts off, you know, as a point-five or something smaller and then, you know, it increases, but I was able to observe and see how it's working over there. And, you know, he, the gentleman at the Brez is able to see around ninety students, which is incredible.
Awesome, great.
And it's really inter- it's really, the process of an interventionist is different because it's not, um, it's for those kids that are struggling at a given time. And so, the goal usually is more of a short-term intervention to really work with a student or group for six to eight weeks as part of, you know, RTI response to intervention. And then, you know, get them caught up on a, on a subject and, you know, be able to then look at the data again and what kids need help now, you know, moving on towards the next six to eight weeks.
I want to add too, I, I think that Tara and Christina have done a, a good job in really working together and they're going, they're visiting. She's seeing the students who are coming in. I think that's been very, very positive. And it's helped her to be able to make some, some good recommendations to me around the budget and around some of the things that she'd like to ha- have happen at Mullen as well.
Yes, one of the goals was to, you know, really improve our transition to, from Brezner Hand to Mullen. That's a big goal. Actually had a meeting with a parent today of a, you know, a student that will be transitioning to Mullen next year. And so, just really making myself available and, you know, sending staff down to the Brez and having Brez staff come up to us and just trying to strengthen that connection.
And I just have one more question then, Bruce. Is this fifth-grade position a new position or is it because the population wave is moving? Or do you need another position?
It's based on the population. So, it's based on the fact that we currently only have seven fifth-grade classes, but we have eight fourth grades moving up to fifth grade and eight coming in.
But you still need to maintain the eight fourth grades for next year, so you're adding, you're not?
Yes, this is an additional position.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yes, and it is, yes, completely based on, you know, this kind of.
It's based on numbers, yeah.
Big population right now of these two grades.
Mr. Mann, did you have a question?
I just wanted to ask, to see if any of the school council members had any comments on the SIP process or, or, you know, your own engagement in it. Give you an opportunity to share that. I certainly would be interested.
I know for myself, this is my first time on a school council, and I know that I can speak for Tara. She's been very informative in all of our meetings, kind of walking us through the process of, okay, here's what we need to work, you know, look at. And here are the different subjects that we need to talk about, you know, whether it's the family and community and then we go into curriculum and assessment. It really gives myself and Amy, I'm sure, a hu- a great visual piece of what's going on at the school as a whole, instead of just what comes home with our own kids. You know, we kind of see what, I have three kids in the system, what, you know, the kids come home with. But it's nice to get the behind-the-scenes view of what's happening overall at the Mullen. And also, I'll have two kids there next year, so it's been very eye-opening for me, very great to be on this committee and kind of talking through things with Tara and saying, okay, well, here, you know, I feel like I'm really have a good handle on what's going on at the Brez, because now, you know, I had two kids now moving up. And so, now it's like, okay, here, now they are entering the Mullen phase. And we do a lot of talking about how we can strengthen that, kind of transition for parents, because I think parents are a little apprehensive of kids leaving the. We do a lot of talking about how we can strengthen that, um, kind of transition for parents, 'cause I think parents are a little apprehensive of kids leaving the Brez, cozy little place of the Brez, and then they go into this new world of the Mullen and they're bigger and they're older and there's a lot more independence there, but you've been great about just walking them through and really being available to parents. So I think for myself personally, it's been great. And other people that I talked to also, Tara's made it, um, known that, you know, parents can contact Amy or myself if they're not comfortable going to Tara. You know, she's given them our personal emails, so we've had some comments come in to us about, you know, suggestions for the website and things like that, that we've been able to kind of share with Tara ourselves, so.
And they were kind enough to let me send out their personal emails to the entire population of our school.
It's been a great. It's been great. No, it's really been a great opportunity and, um, it's, it's been nice to, Tara's very open to getting feedback from us, so I feel like it goes both ways. We learn the overall, what's happening at the school and we get to, um, give some feedback as well.
You can look at this, you can look at the school improvement plan and see some of the feedback that you've given?
Definitely, definitely. And, um, similarly, I have a child at the Brezner hand too, so the whole, you know, we can see how it's all coming together from being part of both schools. And I think, um, both of us are from education backgrounds, so that helps too, and then being parents and, um, we kind of come, come out from all sides.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
Anything else? I just want to applaud you again for your, your SIPs, but also, um, I think we, as a school committee, heard about the great success of the math night. And one of the things that makes me happy about that is that you had teachers doing demonstrations and I can't begin to tell you how important that is for, for the public and for us to see that, you know, teachers are, are, you know, coming back to school at night and sharing with parents because in the beginning there was a little angst about the math program, and I think partly as a result of these math nights, that, that angst, I don't hear it anymore.
No, and I haven't, I haven't heard that either, and I, and I, thank you for saying that, and I just want to say like a public thank you 'cause of, to those teachers, Lauren Arumel, Carol Snow,
Yes.
Maureen Lyons, Taylor and Emily Weber. Um, they were amazing. They were, they were amazing. And the parent, I mean, it was just, it was fun. I, I mean, it was act- it was fun.
That's what I keep hearing.
And the parents were like, wait a minute, how do we, wait, how do I solve, how do I do this problem? You know, it really was, like, the teachers were, were teaching them, they teach the students. So it was, it was a good learning opportunity. Pretty good times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann and Amy. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Moving on to the next item, uh, transportation fees. I'm going to turn this over to the superintendent.
Um, just to give you, um, a little bit of background, um, you know that we, we made some mi- some changes to our transportation policy uh, last year in which we raised our fees to three hundred dollars per student for the first two students in the family. Additional family members over two students, um, would be at the rate of a hundred dollars per student. Um, we budgeted a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, um, for that. We actually have taken in about two hundred and eighteen thousand at this point. Um, our ridership is down by about fifty students this year, um, but it, it has been a, a very smooth process this year. Um, and I, I do not want to, I'm not making any recommendations to change the process. I'd like to leave the process just as it is.
I, I, Audrey, you're gonna say what I was gonna say, so go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I, I just, um, are we still collecting the fees as we did last year in one lump and is that in June? I know you were.
You read my mind.
I did.
Um, we did, we, I mean, it was done that way. Nancy has not indicated that she wants to make any changes to that. I, we can certainly talk about that.
It's gonna come up again, um, you know, especially with people that do have, you know, more than two kids and, and I think if we could do it in two blocks where they pay, they don't get the pass and then the second payment, um, but it's.
So specifically, what are you suggesting? Just so that I, I make sure that I convey it correctly.
Yeah, well, um, off, off the top of my head, probably two payments. I don't know what the dates would be, um, but an opportunity maybe to pay earlier. Um, and then have your later date be what the June date, I think it's June now, because I, we went over, and actually I think we had this conversation, um, um, the mayor and I, about the end of the school year is all those field trips, um, class dues if you're in high school, um, the transportation piece, it just is a lot of money and,
Summer camps.
And I actually figured it out last year for a family with two children and what they had to pay, um, between May and June was astronomical. You know, that's when your sports registrations, that's when your summer childcare is due. If anyone's sending a child to camp, the regi- the final payment's due in May, it's, it's a killer. I mean, even if we did something, which now is too late to do something in March, but it, May and June, it's, 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 it's your mortgage payment. And it's ev- it's everything, and it's, some of it's outside of school, but it all pertains to children, so, um, I know that it's gonna be asked about doing some sort of payment, and people who want to pay upfront, you know, can certainly do that, but a lot of people said they could have eaten the increase if there was a way to, to make, just do it to installments or, I mean, ideally it'd be great to do three, but that's probably a paperwork nightmare. But two, I would think could be manageable because you either pay the second and get your pass or you don't, um.
Yeah, we, the, the registration date was May twenty-ninth this past year and, um, after June fifteenth, uh, bus passes will be mailed to all who registered online, in person, or mailed in by the ma- by May twenty-ninth, so that's what we did.
So, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure what the best dates are that work, but people are looking for at least a month between, um, but all, you know, and, and in particular, last year, I think I added it up at a meeting we were at, just with one family with two children, um, and, and one of them was still um, needing, um, summer care.
Mm-hmm.
So, we could ask her and see what we can come up with this time and then maybe look next year about.
Are we gonna talk with her tomorrow? Yeah.
Did you have a question?
May I?
No, we take credit cards now, right?
Visa?
We can't do Visa. Visa, Visa won't allow us to do Visa.
Yeah, just knocked out half.
We are, we are looking at some other options available. So we have, we have looked into that, we're waiting to get more data on that, so we may have more options.
'Cause that would be helpful too, 'cause you could pay it over time.
That's another frustrating component with the MasterCard.
Yeah.
Is it possible to use, the, the vendor that takes, uh, credit card payments for tax, for city tax bills? Is that, I mean, is it possible?
That's really not a good topic today. We had some issues with, uh, our online system and we're evaluating it, but I think the one that, but I think the registration piece that Andy Egmont uses at Youth Services has been really helpful, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would strongly urge us to use a vendor that takes Visa payments because that just seems crazy to me that we're gonna offer credit cards as an option, but not offer Visa, which makes up almost half of all.
Yeah, but Visa won't allow us to do it.
Right.
No, we understand, I understand that, but.
Me, I see that to us.
But, but there are other online credit card programs that don't, I, I don't understand why we can't use Visa with this particular vendor.
Yeah.
I, I mean, to me that doesn't seem acceptable. I mean, if we're gonna take credit card payments, we should find a vendor that will allow us to take all of them.
Except all of them.
There are certainly vendors that take Visa.
Uh, may I suggest that, um, superintendent looks into that and then, um, perhaps Mr. Cole at the next FinCom committee meeting, could you put that on the agenda so we can have some information back? Can you remind me when the next meeting is?
March twelfth.
Okay, so why don't we do that and, um, see if we can get some further information?
Yeah, we could, we could contact, uh, Newbury Port Youth Services, I think does a pretty good job, so.
I made a note of that.
Do we need to take a vote on not changing the, um, rate?
Uh, only if she's making a recommendation for a change, right?
No, she's not making.
She's not, right. You're, we're leaving the fees as they are.
Yes, it's my recommendation, yes.
Although it does say on here, there's an asterisk that said the school committee, um, possible vote, so, um, Mr. Cole, wh- what is your feeling as the chair of?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think this would be for FY sixteen, we should vote that, uh, the, uh, transportation fees will, uh, remain the same for FY sixteen.
Could I hear a second? You just made a motion.
One second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
I agree.
All right.
Thank you, and we'll get back on, uh, at FinCom with that other piece. Does that sound okay? Um, school choice is our next item up?
Um, I, I obviously have talked with all of the principals, um, and you know, our lightest enrollment is at, and I say lightest, is at Brezner, but that's anywhere between seventeen and a, and a half to up to twenty-two in a classroom, which for our youngest children is, is getting up there. Uh, Knock Mullen is, uh, ranges from twenty-three to twenty-five, and those are the projections. And then, you know, as you know, at the high school, we definitely have increased our enrollment there. So we're in another position for this coming year where I feel we don't have room for school choice. I realize it's the second year in a row, but, um, we're tight.
It is what it is. Any comments or?
Yeah, I, I have a question. So, and I understand clearly the, uh, not having the space, but I, I have to ask with respect to the educators program at the high school, is there any plan to add students to that?
We-
I think if there's a plan to add students to that, I think we, we need to talk about being fair to everybody.
We have two students, um, who are scheduled for educators for next year, or made application for educators for next year.
And how many do we have right now?
We have four right now.
We have four right now. So effectively there'll be two less.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, that's not to say that we won't have, we could, could we have another applicant between now and the end of the year? Yes, we could.
Right, right, but it's not like we have ten, we're planning on ten or anything like that.
No, we do not. No.
Or six, okay, all right. Okay.
So could I hear a motion on school choice?
I think if you're not gonna do anything to it, um, pardon, I think if you're not gonna do anything to it, you just don't have, don't, you don't vote, you keep it as it, as it was.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
Does everybody agree with that?
I agree with it, yeah, that, 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 we should always do, make sure we always do it that way. Uh, and I feel like unless there's a change, you just keep it.
Okay. This is an asterisk on that one too, all right. Uh, next on the agenda is the, um, superintendent's evaluation forum update, and I did ask all of you to prepare yourselves for this evening by, um, bringing and rereading the superintendent's evaluation from last year. Um, I did have done a paper for you on, um, this is the sheet, um, that we've always used to look at the superintendent's rubric at a glance. What you're seeing is a single sheet. I have a couple of extras if you need it. Um, if you look at the, do you have? Do you have them? That one though, I mean. Does everybody, okay. Um, so this sheet is the rep- the superintendent's rubric at a glance, and what I've done, this reflects what we did last year, so you'll see that it says two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen on the bottom. Uh, we evaluated the superintendent on all four standards and twenty-three out of, out of forty-two elements. Those are what I've circled in purple up above. Um, the reason, the reason that I asked you to bring your, your own information, um, with you, uh, we are gonna have to determine what the elements are if we, um, evaluate the superintendent on all four standards. Uh, one of the biggest pieces, and I have misplaced it and I'm really sorry, is, um, last year, we did not have Susan identify specific, um, goals, which is on page two of the document. Professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and a district improvement goal. So that's a change we've made this year. There would, there are three SMART goals. Last year, if you recall, the superintendentage did, um, areas of focus for us, and then we matched those areas of focus to this rubric at a glance document. So we knew where we were going and why we were going and the direction we were going in. So then I pulled out the Newbury Port Public Schools draft, uh, it says draft, but the district goals that, uh, this, the school district, uh, adopted for this year. And I aligned those with, um, the standards and elements that, that I feel they apply to. Um, I would be looking for more input from members, um, for that as well. So I guess what I'm asking you is, um, you have a copy of last year's standards and elements and the ones that were used. Based on your own evaluation, um, and the school committee composite, which I also have a copy of the work that we all did, um, are there other elements that you would like to see considered? Are, are there some that you would like to see changed? Um, then Susan and I and the mayor will meet and we will, uh, develop, um, a list as we did last year of the elements that Susan's responsible for. I do recall that one of the, uh, questions we had as a committee was the way that, uh, we were given, um, backup data. Uh, so I, I want to have a very clear picture from all of you when, um, the mayor and the superintendent and I sit down, what you feel is, are the important elements that we want to evaluate her on. And that's why I asked you to prepare this for tonight, so I'd like to hear from you. So actually, you know, the first step would be for, well, for you to look at, um, the, the rubric at a glance and then in your mind, match it to your own evaluation of the superintendent. And then, um, we need to, to discern the elements that we're going to evaluate on this year. And as I said, last year we did about half, a little more than half of them. Anyone?
Well, we're just, I, I hadn't prepared by looking at the rubric, um, so I'm refamiliarizing myself with it and noting areas, I certainly, I'll start.
Thank you.
I certainly think that, um, all of the elements, pretty much all of the elements that we evaluated on last year, we should continue to evaluate on. I don't see, I don't see any elements here that I would say now we, we can take a pass on. Um, there are other elements here that I think I, I would like to have an opportunity to, um, give, provide some feedback on. Um, for me, just, and again, I, this is what is just jumping out at me, I'm sure there would be more. Um, I think, I think the, uh, under, under standard one, um, subsection E, uh, improvement of performance effectiveness in learning, I think it's time to, to look at that. Under standard two, um, a, a, a topic that we've talked a lot about this year would be, um, under subsection A, environment indicator, number three, student safety. Uh, health and social and emotional needs. Um, I would also look at standard three, engagement indicator, uh, which is subsection A engagement indicator, I would say family engagement. Under B, I would say student support. Um, and that's just my first glance at this, at additional elements, I think, that I would like to provide feedback on and evaluate.
Can I just remind that my professional practice goal was leading communication improvement efforts along with the leadership team within the district and with parents in the community by June via the school district website. The student learning goal was, I will lead the development and implementation of rigorous and engaging math curriculum along with a leadership team that is aligned to state and federal standards, measured by observations, data analysis, and aligned curriculum documents. And then the district improvement goal was create a process to develop a comprehensive strategic plan along with the leadership team, um, with full implementation to occur in school year fifteen, sixteen.
So, those are the three, um, if you look at, um, as I said to you before, page two of the evaluation document, um, those- those three are- are, um, listed, and then on page, um, three of the document, if you recall, you rate the impact on the student- student learning go- goal first, and then everything comes from that. So, last year, we didn't have specific goals, so it's important to understand, um, we've accepted these three goals, and now what we need to do, you need to help us put these three goals into this sheet. Hi.
Well, sorry.
No, Mike.
Um, I mean, I think one of the things that is helpful that we have this year with the superintendent provided in our previous evaluation was a plan for two thousand fourteen, fifteen in each of these areas. So, for example, within, um, two A, even though student safety, health, and social, emotional needs isn't one of the specific areas under two A that we included in last year's review, one of the goals for this year was to continue to update school safety procedures and review current practices. So, that's clearly a student, uh, school safety goal, even though school's safety isn't specifically called out in the evaluation. So, I mean, you know, honestly, I think all forty-two of these elements are important, but, y- you know, I- and I think that they can be captured under the broader, um, measure under each. So, for standard two, environment indicator, I think it would be appropriate to include goals that, uh, that speak to plans, procedures, and routines, operational systems, and student safety, which I think actually is what we have, even though operational systems was the only one of those three things that was specifically called out, so.
Good point.
To me, I mean, to me, you know, I- I guess I- I would use this as a guide in terms of setting the specific goals, but maybe in the evaluation, you know, under standard two, A, like, list three, list these three things, then under that, list the specific goals, and we can see from the goals, you know, to what extent each of those three things is addressed in the evaluation. I mean, it's- it's hard for me to say that some of these things are more important than y- than others, and I think that there's a lot of overlap within each of these standards and substandards. So, I almost think it would be more helpful to focus on the standard and then the substandard, and then the goals without specific reference to these forty-two, um, areas.
So, right now, we have three goals.
Well.
Susan- Susan has presented us with, um.
Can you just read those off again, to what I?
The goals themselves or the areas?
The three goals.
I closed it.
I'm sorry.
I need to open it again.
Yes. Angela?
I was just listening to what Mike was saying and, you know, in the spirit of how we use the evaluation system with our teachers and with our administrators, I think he's right on target there to really be able to focus on the standard themselves and what those indicators are without getting to heavily invested in each of the indicators. Because the indicators were really designed to help guide your thinking about those standards, not necessarily that the person being evaluated needs to meet every single indicator. Those are samples of how one might get to that standard, so I just, I just wanted to add that because that's the philosophy in which we operate with- with our educators around using the rubric. It's really serves as a very nice guide to help you better understand each of the standards.
So, how does the evidence relate to that? Because I think that's the key piece then to tie it together.
And the evidence relates to the goals as well as the standard. So, you know, when a- when a, um, teacher hands in evidence, for example, under standard one, they may speak to some of these indicators, but they may not speak to all of them, and that does not mean that they haven't met that goal.
Mm-hmm.
Because they'll give you evidence around a component of this that they're really striving, um, to do a great job with. So, you know, I think, I- I remember Carla Bear very specifically when she was doing the original training, saying, "It's really unrealistic for anybody to think that anyone can meet all of these indicators." This is a guide, the rubric was designed as a guide. And- and I think what Cheryl is saying about matching the SMART goals that Susan has made, but you don't dismiss the standards. When we evaluate teachers, we look at their SMART goals, and we look at the four standards as well, but in more of a general sense, you know, on how well they're progressing within that standard.
Steve, the, um, professional practice goal was I will lead communication improvement efforts along with the leadership team within the district and with parents in the community by June two thousand and fifteen via the school district website. Student learning goal was I will lead the development and implementation of rigorous and engaging math curricula along with a leadership team that is aligned to state and federal standards, measured by observations, data analysis, and aligned curriculum documents. And then lastly, the district improvement goal, create a process to develop a comprehensive strategic plan along with a leadership team, um, with full implementation to occur in fifteen, sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I think it might be a good idea if you send that out again, please, I can't, 'cause I-
I, I checked my, I checked, I checked both email addresses and couldn't find it. So, somehow we got it, but I can't.
I think you got a paper copy of it, didn't you?
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think, 'cause I don't remember it, so.
I couldn't find it, so.
Okay, I'm happy to do so. We did talk about it, 'cause I did go over the, yeah.
We did, we talked about it, I think we got a hard copy.
Well, we make the sound.
Yeah, I checked.
How would you rather they complete it?
Three of us and bring it back.
I mean, if I can just add, uh.
I know, I'm gonna sign up. Um, so, oh, yes.
Just, I guess fu- functionally, from just taking a look at this, I mean, I would think that we, it would be safe to, uh, maybe look at the things that we, uh, evaluated on last year, look at those again and look for evidence of those, and then select some of the other ones, not, you know, I- I would first say, I'd like to say, do them all, but I- I don't, as- as mentioned, I don't think it makes sense to need to do them all, but I think that, looking at the areas that we did last year, I think if we found evidence in those this year, that might help, but.
Yes.
And so the, so I just wanna clarify all this. So, the- the three goals that you mentioned, th- those are the performance goals that go at the beginning of the evaluation.
Yes.
So, then, within each of these standards, I mean, I- I think that we have a pretty good document already be- because of the fact that you included your two thousand fourteen, fifteen plans along with your self-evaluation, when you put the self-evaluation together. So, so, for example, in two A, which is, so, standard two is management and operations, and A is environment indicator. So, we called out operational systems in the last review. What I, my approach would be not to specifically call out any of these one through, one, two, or three, um, things and just rate based on the goals that you laid out under standard two A for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, which is to work with the school committee to evaluate current food service delivery, explore alternatives, work with the director of fac- facilities to develop identified and geared custodial expectations and evaluations, work with all unions to streamline and create effective evaluation practices, and continue to update school safety procedures and review current practices. So, those four things really touch on all three of the aspects of
Mm-hmm.
standard two A. They're not just operational systems, they speak to plans, procedures, and routines, and they speak to student safety. So, you know, you've got the three goals to begin the evaluation process that are the performance goals, the SMART goals, and then you've got several goals that you laid out at the same time that you laid out your self-appraisal, which I think would just be carried over into the two thousand fourteen, fifteen review under each of the- the four standards and the areas within the standards.
Help- help me a little bit, though. Um, like, I'm looking at page eight, which is curriculum, and, um, we, when- when Kathy made up this document, um, i- i- she- she took, you know, the language that was there from the state, and then we used it, and I think, Angela, this is exactly what you're saying. W- we grouped it under, um, one A, one B, one C, and then we gave one indicative mark on the elements in that standard, and I think that's what you're saying too, right? Not to focus so much on the individual element, but take a look at the standard, um, you know, l- l- list the things, and then y- you respond with evidence. But I understand that last year, there were a couple of committee members that weren't, um, a hundred percent satisfied with the evidence, so I don't want that to happen again. So, what's gonna make that easier? Um, as you know, at the bottom of the pages of the, um, standards, there are examples of evidence the superintendent might provide, uh, doesn't say all of them. Are we gonna ask her to find one or two in this document that?
I would say, I would say that she ideally, if she is providing evidence and achieving those goals, she should at least tell us what that evidence is, uh, when we- when we put this together. So, for example, uh, I'm submitting, uh, I don't know, looking at page eight here, uh, it's a bidding by agenda for school visits and, uh, the reports, uh, sample reports. Then, we know what we're looking for and looking at in relation to that goal. Does that make sense, Susan?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And that's, I think, what happened last year, 'cause I'm looking at page eight also, and, and Susan listed her evidence, you know, right under each of those- those standards and elements and indicators. Um, did we get separate pieces of paper and dates and times and data? No. And that was, um, brought up last year, so I just wanna make sure that, in fairness to Susan, that she knows what we're expecting for evidence. And I'm gonna say it again, there were a couple of us that weren't happy with it last year, so I don't, I don't want that to happen again.
But I also, let me just say that I also heard that you didn't want reams and reams of evidence.
Exactly.
I agree.
Okay. So, that's what I'm trying to kind of flesh out here, what is acceptable for us.
What is, what is the balance between the reams and reams and the?
And again, this is a new process for me, because it was different than the process that I had in, um, Connecticut, so.
Angela, did you have a comment? You look like you have a comment.
I do, because this is, uh, I'm looking at Lee and I'm thinking, this is the rub with, um, teachers to, in- in this process, is how much is enough evidence? What is the right amount of evidence? How do you really, and- and the thing we've talked about at the school level is, uh, basically being able to tell your story about that standard. And for some standards, it may require more evidence that you show around something, because it may be a goal area for you that you're working very hard on, and so you show more evidence there. And then other standards, you may show less evidence. So, I think in this conversation, as a school committee, if you have priority standards where you really want to see significant evidence in that area, that would be a great thing to be able to tell Susan, because then she would know she should focus on that. But it's really kind of, um, contrived, if you say, we wanna see three pieces of evidence for the, you know.
No.
So, what you wanna see is just, you know, because sometimes you can provide one piece of evidence that really covers multiple standards, and it's, you know, really very much integrated into a lot of the process. So, you know, quality evidence, we've talked about to the teachers, it's not about quantity, it's about quality.
Right.
It's about, um, you know, really being able to-
I like your, your description of telling the story.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I guess that also gives us the flexibility to say, or for Susan to say, hey, for this, I'm, all I need is a table of contents of this document, and if people wanna take a look at the document in all its glory, it's there. For this other one, I really wanna go in and explain what I mean by paragraph four on page three, because it's crucial to the story I'm trying to tell. Um, and we don't know that going in saying, "Two, we just want two, please."
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be, we're choosing ourselves, it's just, uh, there- there's judgment that needs to come into play here.
Exactly.
And.
Yeah, but there's also things written, and I don't have it with me, on that DESE model, specific about the- the evidence. And I think that frankly, w- w- we have a responsibility to- to ask for an appropriate amount, and, uh, if we need to take a look and see what other school districts do, we take a look and see what other school districts do, because I think frankly, this is something the DESE has implemented. It's been voted on as statute by the state legislature, it's effectively law. Uh, I don't think, I mean, some flexibility, but I don't think we wanna be pushing the envelope on this.
I'm not suggesting that, that would be too little.
I'm not, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Too little, too.
Remember that the legislature voted all this stuff in, so, you know, if we don't, I- I- I think if we don't meet, you know, in principle, what- what is being asked for, I- I- I don't think we're, you know, doing our job the correct way. And I'm not, like I say, I'm, so, I'm just looking for ways to better define it. And again, this is early in the process.
Right, that's, exactly.
Yeah.
And that's exactly why we're having this kind of a conversation, before we go into a meeting. But, is it fair to say that Susan has three goals, which are statutory in this, um, document? And is it fair to say that that's where a lot of her evidence should come from? Um, between her professional goals and the, uh, district goals? I- I don't wanna invent a different wheel here, I- I- I want it to flow nicely.
I would venture to say that both of those, if she does a good job of those three goals and event of the district goals, uh, we will be covering evidence in just about everything else we've done here.
That's my point, so.
Ideally, I mean, if- if there's something that we're not, we, you know, that, that would be the-
We can pick up on it, I think this could be-
We would need to have the- the committee that is doing the evaluation pick up on that.
Yeah.
And say, oh, there's a gap here, what are we gonna do about it?
And I think we a- we can go back and ask for evidence in a specific field if it isn't given to us. So, anybody else have a, um, because we'll meet on this document with your input, um, and then we'll come back to you very quickly. I don't wanna fall behind in this process this year. Um, I think we owe it to all of us to get this completed by June first. Um, there were some extraordinary circumstances last year, I think, but I am trying to get us back on a timeline, both with this and with our school committee self-evaluation. So, um, I'd like to say we would meet within the next two weeks, and then, the next time we have a school committee meeting, we could come back. Does that sound all right, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, and in the meantime.
I'd say, I assume you'll be accepting feedback.
In the meantime, if anybody has any thoughts after you've kind of taken a look at all of this documentation, please let me know, and we'll incorporate it in the conversation at our evaluation meeting. Okay? Thanks. I lost my attention. What's next? Sorry. Um, the next thing on our agenda is our, um, ad hoc committee for communications. Are there any updates for that? Um, Ms. McCarthy, did you hear any feedback about our vote or?
No.
Anything like that? Okay. Um, superintendent's report.
It's here somewhere. Just a few things that I'd like to update you on. Um, I want you to be aware that over the last, um, two weeks, um, we have had both Endicott and Salem State, uh, come and spend time, uh, in Newburyport, and, um, I was able to, uh, give them a tour of the schools, and we are looking to really strengthen our partnerships with higher ed. Um, Salem State will be coming back to us with a formal partnership agreement later this spring, um, but they are looking to place students in Newburyport, um, beginning for- But they are looking to place students in Newburyport, beginning for three-week periods and working all the way up to student teaching and potentially internships. They are changing their model, and they're going to a five-year program. So we are looking to bring Salem State students into Newburyport. Francesca Palmerance was able to meet with all of the building principals and was able to talk with all of them and to inform them. And the same with Endicott. And we're looking to really expand those partnerships as we move forward. So I think that's pretty exciting. It's a very, it's a nice opportunity for our students. In addition to that, we're also looking, in the future, to really create more dual-credit options for our students. And Salem State in particular is quite interested in doing that. So I think that's exciting. I also wanted to just give everyone a very brief budget update, both where we were last year at this budget time and where we are now in comparison. I thought it was important to just take a really brief look at that. Last year at this time, as you know, we were really looking at a budget deficit. And in February, we were looking at a shortfall. I am very delighted to report to you that currently we are at 76% of our, is expended at this point. You can see what we have remaining. We are within our budget utilizing our contingency in special education. And we're, the deficit there is about $7,000 right now, but that's going to be covered by transportation. We have expended our maintenance contingency that we had. And you will not be surprised that it was based on snow removal. As you know, we needed to get our roofs shoveled off, and that took the entire $20,000 there. But we are not predicting any type of shortfall at this point. So I wanted to just reassure everyone that we're in a very good position right now. Questions?
School lunch.
Well, school lunch, we've just transferred $25,000.
And is it our feeling, Mr. Cole, maybe you can help me, that that wasn't a one-time ask?
Well, I think we just look at the school fund balance account. And when, and, you know, Ms. Lysick will point out when we're not going to make payroll. And at that time, we'll probably have to do something again.
Yeah. But we're anticipating that occurring again.
I think so, yeah.
That's why I just wanted to... Anybody have, Mr. Mannet?
Yeah. Your thoughts on why we're not in the position? I know that last year's deficit was a cumulative deficit over a long time. But I just wanted to hear from you what we did differently this year that helped us to stay on budget.
I think that a large portion of it had to do with special education last year. And I think that we've made some adjustments to our programs this year. And I think that's really working. I mean, you heard Tara talk tonight about how our language-based program, that we're really having success with that program. So I think that that's a piece of it. I also think that obviously we had an increased budget last year. We were able to purchase a lot of the things that teachers needed. And, you know, that's been, that was been very, very positive, that we've been able to do that. And we've been able to buy the right supplies this year. But I think that largely it was due to the accumulated difficulty that we had in special education, so.
The change in sped is not, is not so much, I'm going to try to ask this question diplomatically, is not so much coming from cuts, as it's also coming from the fact that the programs, we think, are having a greater impact and mitigating and providing support and intervening before things...
Yes, I think that's, I think that's an accurate statement. I also think that we have, we've enhanced the programs overall. So we now are looking to have, you could move from Breznerhan to Mullen, and you're going to have the same services available if you need them. And then you can move from Mullen to NOC. So I think that it's really been, we strengthened our programs.
Why, you know, the Mullen SIP, I mean, my comment, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I had it written down, I just didn't make it. The idea of being able to provide some of these sort of utilities for all kids, not only makes a lot of sense, but it also reduces the stigma of being a special-needs child and needing some additional support.
It strengthens the environment within every school.
I believe that it does. And I know that we've been working very hard on that. And I'm glad to see, not only is that having some success, but there's also been budgetary implications of that success, constructive budgetary implications.
Anything?
And just while I'm on the, just for you to be aware, where we are in terms of the leadership team and the budget process, we are on our third iteration, if you will, of looking at, vetting is a good word, of really vetting. And in, we are meeting again, this Wednesday is our next meeting. And we refine the budget a little bit more every time that we meet. And we are slowly but surely putting together the budget that I will be presenting to you at a later date.
Is that it, Peter?
No, I have a couple more things. I spoke with you about Let's Talk. And the 5.0 version of Let's Talk is actually going to be, will be upgraded this coming Thursday. The administrators are being trained on Wednesday of this week. And we will be, I will be sending out information out to our teachers, our students, and also the community at large, more information on that, once Wednesday and Thursday happen, so towards the end of the week. And I did want to just bring this up. That was a letter that both Ma'am Holliday and I received. And it says, "On behalf of the entire wellness department, we'd like to extend our congratulations to the city of Newburyport for winning the 2014 MIA Health Benefits Trust Well-Aware Award for Excellence in Wellness." And you may or may not be aware, but we really have been, city and school district employees have been partnering on a whole host of well, a whole host of activities that surround wellness this year. And, you know, it started out with Donna and I having, making lunch for each other and the pedometer kickoff. The latest one that's coming up is that if you signed up, you could get a Fitbit. And there's a whole program that you could go through for that. But there's been a number of very, very good workshops. So we really have expanded what we're doing in this area, and it's going to continue. It's, there's a lot of good activities. I mean, everything from, you know, healthy heart awareness. We did a whole thing on Mediterranean cooking, that I actually attended that. And we even targeted snowplow drivers, and we did some work with them. So I just want you to be aware that that is another partnership between the city and the school district that's going quite well. And the last thing is just that, on my list was to update you on the glycol leak that we had today. And it was fairly significant damage from the perspective of, that we had served pro into, they were, carpeting was soaked in both the outer office and in Tara's office. They had to open up part of Tara's wall to actually close the valve. And there probably, there was, it was damage done to the teacher mailboxes. So we're still evaluating as to what the extent of the damage will be. But I will, I will keep you posted once we have a final, final list. And then my last thing that I want to tell you is that we had, the, Desi was in today as part of their coordinated program review. So we had someone from Desi who was in district today, reviewing files for our mid-cycle review. This person was focused on making sure that any findings from the coordinated program review of three years ago have been addressed and corrected. Her comment today was that our, that the IEPs that she reviewed were extremely well-written and that the files that she looked at were totally organized. We've resolved any issues that were mentioned in the previous coordinated program review. She was impressed and said several times how well we were doing with our special education compliance. Her visit included a walkthrough of NOC and Mullen to observe the locations of special education service delivery. And that went well, although we need to take down the signs that indicate special education rooms and speech and language rooms, which were all part of the building project. So those have to be removed. All in all, it was a very positive visit. Dr. D is quite proud of the way that we came through this. And this person will be coming back tomorrow, and she will be interviewing some of our special education and our related service staff tomorrow. And we will get a final report, which obviously we'll share with you. But this was a, was very positive. And that's, that's my superintendent.
Okay.
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Oh, yes, that's the other, I'm going to have you talk about that.
Okay.
Yep, I'll go over those dates. But let me have Angela just jump in for one minute.
It's just a quick thing that I wanted to let you know about is that Chartwell Food Services is going to do a pasta dinner for the families that live on Plum Island that have been displaced and have schoolchildren on Thursday, this Thursday at 6:00. She's going to do pasta and meatballs and salad and dessert. And a way that they can come together with their neighbors and whatnot and just have a relaxing dinner. And we, I wanted to give a little shout-out to Chartwell for that and thank them for that effort. So that's this Thursday at 6:00 at the NOC-Mullen Cafeteria.
Very nice.
And my last announcement is just that I am holding a superintendent's advisory council meeting this week, opening it up to the community. And one of the big topics will be the budget and then the website and communication.
And that's 6:30 Thursday, could you...
Thursday night at, in NOC-Mullen Library.
So you can have dinner.
Yeah, some spaghetti.
There you go. Two for one.
And one of the other things that the leadership team will be talking about, we've had, when we have done the math nights, if you will, this year, or the technology forum that we had, those, you know, those seem to have been a very enjoyable way to present information about some of the things that we're doing. So I think it's likely that we will be doing something else in the spring. And at least have one more forum before the end of the year, because I think those have been, and topic to be determined.
Thank you. Join, I'm going to move on to subcommittee reports. Joint Ed met this evening. We shared with the city council that we are in the process of hearing about school improvement plans and what some of the ramifications will be for budgeting and how the school budget process going forward is relative to the school improvement plans, that there's a big connection there, that that's how we begin to build priorities. Yep, another thing we talked about was the new schedule for the high school next year. And in that, we had a conversation about opportunities for advisor-advisee program, internships, dual enrollment, opening up the walls of the high school, if you will, because of the change in the scheduling at the high school. We did speak about the community forum on bullying, which is April 7th in the NOC library. We talked about the school lunch program and what our next steps are. And as you know, we need to go out to bid this year. I think the FinCon and Mr. Cole, correct me if I'm wrong, we've decided that we need to stay with an outside vendor at this point until we get some more information. So we'll be getting back to you on that.
Well, I mean, I think the issue, we'll see if there's any outside vendors who want to bid, so we'll see.
As you know, the city council did transfer $25,000 into the school lunch program to help us pay for payroll. And lastly, we spoke a little bit about, the city council gave us a smart growth update on 40R. And one of the steps in that, that's the whole development down by the traffic circle near the courthouse. And what is going in there and what isn't, and how that might impact the schools. So in determining that future, the city council is looking at, I think, Audrey, help me here, seven different things that they need to take under consideration. One of them being, how will that impact the schools? And from what I'm understanding now, it's mostly one-bedrooms. No? Oh.
Please.
Yes.
We've been, I'm not sure where they said just one-bedrooms, because it's not.
Some twos.
There's some twos and there's a couple threes.
Oh, no. That's not what we heard.
But, well, I'm telling you, I've been working on this 40R for a long time. And I've, you know, part of it is, I think, that it's just gone to committee, the meeting hearing is, or hearing, but it's public information session is tomorrow night. We've met with the experts on 40Rs from the state. The 40R is a smart-growth, affordable-housing ordinance that has to be passed by the city. Once it's passed by the city, we then develop a district that there is also a component of it which allows for additional funding to the community if the district is going to impact the schools. We don't anticipate that there will be a tremendous impact there for that. But it really gives us an opportunity to create something that we really need in the community, which is affordable housing and rentals for students, for seniors, for young professionals. And this potentially Minco has, is doing a due diligence. And we've been working with them on design. And so the next step hopefully is by April, we hope to pass the 40R ordinance, which is, as I said, in the process of being reviewed. Information session tomorrow night. And then the next piece is a hearing, which will have to be held between the joint committee of the city council, planning and development, and the planning board. And it will be a formal hearing. And then it would come out of committee on the floor of the council and be adopted. We have an opportunity of generating, you know, between $500,000 and $600,000 as a result of creating this 40R. One thing to keep in mind, though, is that as we look at that gateway, if you will, of the city and moving up Route 1, Minco does own three other parcels of land and is talking about developing those, too. However, we only have capacity right now at our Graff Road lift station for this development. And then once we do some changes to the zoning, which potentially could happen, because we're working on that with the business park, we need to do a major overhaul of a main and a new lift station on Graff Road. And that comes to the tune of about $6 million.
Who's singing that tune? Is Minco singing that tune?
What, paying for the...
No, I'm just wondering what kind of support we can expect from them around that.
Well, again, that's something that, we tried that route with the Low Street betterments and lost with the betterments that were asked of Pioneer Village. And I don't know if you remember that, Audrey, you were on the council at that time. Remember that lovely meeting at the middle school auditorium? So you have to tread carefully, you know, in terms of these types of improvements, betterments, whatever. I mean, I think certainly as we go forward, there is contribution that needs to happen for us to...
I mean, I'm sure that Minco would hate to see us have to absorb these costs that they can make their profit and then have to cut our schools because we don't have the money to make these kinds of... So I know we have to tread carefully, I just...
No, there's no, absolutely, absolutely. So I'm not quite sure why... So, I'm not quite sure why, I mean, there's eighty apartments, twenty-five percent depth of affordability, eighty percent average, medium wage and income and there are a couple three bedrooms, mostly twos and singles, I'm not quite sure why, but...
And we were told one and a half parking spaces for the two-bedroom units.
Yeah. Because...
I know that, but how do you, or you have to buy a smart car because it'll fit in half a space.
No, the reason that we do that is because we're trying to reduce impervious surface and the fact you're on a train station in a rail trail.
Right.
And so, the whole point of a transit-oriented development is the fact that you expect people to be biking, walking, using public transportation. Well, maybe.
Maybe.
If the commuter rail does.
Survive.
Walkers will be seventeen percent of the time.
So, but anyway...
And I think the point...
And so, that was part of the reason, we didn't want to make that requirement because so much of that property is wetlands and so, and undevelopable, so as you start requiring this two-to-one ratio of cars to unit...
Yeah.
You end up, you know, reducing the amount of space that, you know, we're trying to do more of a, a dense development with less parking.
And I, and I think the reason the city council brought it to us is because, you know, the issue of the schools is there, how many, what would be the influx or the impact in, in our, into our schools and as we all heard tonight, our class sizes are pretty hefty, we're not doing school choice, so I'm just glad to hear that that's one of the items that pe, that people are going to attend to when they, when they do that. I think that was the reason that...
Well, very specifically, the ordinance, the ordinance identifies that if there's an impact to the schools, that there is funding that comes through that program to, to help, whether it's, you know, to put towards an additional teacher or whatever.
I was talking more about space to...
Yeah.
We're, we're not taking choice because we've got, we've got almost four hundred kids in the, in Mullen, the amount of money, even if every bit of it is dedicated, is going to buy us more classrooms, you know, and partly it's going to be teachers, but we have to have the space to be able to teach the kids. So, so that's, that's an area to be treading very carefully in.
That's it from the joint Ed. Finance?
Our next meeting is March 12th.
Policy?
We begin the Saturday.
For three hours, your marathon?
Yeah.
Have you got food?
I thought I heard somebody say they were bringing bagels.
All right. Curriculum instruction and accountability, Mike?
Yep, the committee met last Wednesday, the 25th, so we spent most of the meeting talking about curriculum-related budgetary priorities, many of which have been covered already in the school improvement plans to varying extents. So, among the things that we talked about in that meeting are science, the business science curriculum and adopting the curriculum to meet the design standards, special education, electives at the high school, things like business programs, math electives, AP chemistry, a lot of the things that were in the NHS School Council's improvement plan, you know, some expansion to existing programs like phonics and writing in the elementary grades. We talked about it, the fifth grade teacher continuing to improve the math curriculum, ELL services and STEM. So, th, those were several of the topics that we talked about throughout the course of that meeting and Susan gave us an update on the progress that her team has been making in terms of putting those priorities together. So, we expect this conversation to continue both within those committee meetings as well as the school committee meetings more broadly. One of the things that we're planning on doing, just because of the timing of the meetings, because we want to meet before the next school committee meeting, is to combine the, the next curriculum subcommittee meeting with the finance subcommittee that's already planning on meeting on, on February, March 12th. And so, as part of that meeting, what we wanted to do is to talk about some priorities that are, that, that school committee members have in terms of curriculum-related budgetary considerations that the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, their team should take into consideration in preparation of a presentation of budgetary priorities. So, one of the requests that, that I would have, and you're certainly welcome to attend that meeting too on the twelfth, is to send any, anything that, that is a priority for you specifically, not necessarily just as part of this, this year's budgetary process, but also for the next two years because they're, they're looking at this more broadly in terms of a three-year plan and not just a plan for the upcoming school year. So, I guess my request to, to all of you would be to, to send either to me or to Steve before the, the March, before the March 12th meeting, anything that you would like us to cover specifically as, as school committee priorities that we can then give to Susan and her leadership team in terms of priorities to consider as they're putting that presentation together.
I think, Mike, we did talk about maybe combining those two committees for a couple of meetings till we got through this. So, it just made sense to us because we wound up going back and forth between finance and, and what the curriculum needs are. So, we decided to join those two committees. They happen to be the same people, so that, you know, makes that easier to do and, and deal kind of with all of it with a, with a, with a wider, a broader stroke, if you will, so that we're not duplicating work. Mayor?
I just, are you all set? Okay. I just wanted to make mention that the governor's budget is due Thursday, his House One. Again, being a new governor, he got extra time, so as soon as that information drops on Thursday, I will send out to all school committee members in terms of what we are expecting for local aid and for Chapter 70. You know, again, you know, the, he's got a huge, huge gap and revenues with the storms that, you know, have, have hit. The city's budget deficit alone is over $500,000 and that doesn't even include Plum Island at this point. It's just been unbelievable winter, so...
And then the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee, I think we brought you up to date. We will try to meet before our next school committee meeting and get back to you with further definition for the superintendent's evaluation. So, I think that's it. Does anyone have anything further? Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. See what... And I just...